This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Welcome to the Rules and Government Relations Committee on May 16th, 6:30 PM. Members can identify themselves from left to right.
Consul Gómez.
Counselor Terrell.
Counselor Korsinski. All present. This meeting is called to order. Dan, I'd like you to come up and join us since there's so few people here. Typically, we have Barb here as a staff member. Well, and you're in an official position because you run the elections for us, so that's very important. We're dealing with ranked choice voting today. There were no minutes to approve. I just wanted to be sure. Ranked choice voting, and that is the single topic on the agenda tonight. We've had several meetings. I'd like to just review one part. It sounds like we're moving forward with a plan for ranked choice voting. And like, we had to put the brakes on it if we're spending all this time working through the plan. Is that everyone's kind of opinion that this will pass in the affirmative from the committee? Good. That was my recollection, although I have reservations about, and I'm sure others do too. That being said, we have Peter Bilder, who has helped the city very often with us. I'd like to open up with any members of the council having anything to bring up tonight?
I do not.
Oh, there's four members of the council. You could talk. You could talk tonight.
Oh, because there's only four of us?
We don't have a quorum, so...
Well, cool. That's helpful.
It's very helpful. Alex, stand with Terrell. Anything that you'd like to bring up at this point?
No, I mean, I have thoughts about this, but I can...
Process things.
Thankfully, there's only one. I'm the only non-committee counselor here, so I can interject in time. Because if I had just info dumped everything right at the beginning, it would probably be kind of annoying.
So I'll open. I would like to ask Dan to review where we were, because he had been kind of like a staff consultant to us in terms of the three choices. We had an option A, an option B, and then option C for numbers one, two, and three. That already started to sound like ranked choice voting to me. So please.
Sure. So option one is sort of about the definitions, how detailed the ranked choice voting tabulation process does the special act need to be. Option two is about when ranked choice voting would be used and in what situations. Basically, how many candidates in a particular race would trigger using ranked choice voting? And then option three is really the question of would this come back from the legislature to the voters? Or would the city be attempting to use the prior vote as justification for it being implemented without an additional, as soon as the law passed in the state House? Those are the three. Do you want me to go over sort of the different?
The various choices, and I didn't feel a need to. Did you, gentlemen? I think that we covered that in detail at the last meeting, so we're okay. I understand that the person who operates the election plan has some thoughts about the subject and to give us some advice, and I would appreciate that.
So I just looked through Dan's options. Okay, I just, I mean, these are just my thoughts. I mean, as far as the definitions, right now, the definition is just one paragraph. This, the first one, I mean, I, like I said in my little letter that I sent to everybody, I'm just not sure that it needs to be really everything spelled out so detailed in the special act because, like I said, you know, say, say we pass a special act and then we get together with our vendor and there's something on here that's not quite right, or maybe down the road, just by life and things changing, something in here changes. I think this could more likely go in the ordinance. If there was something that needed to be changed, it's a lot easier to do it in ordinance than through a special act. I mean, I'm not, you know, the option B with the definition, I mean, not to say it couldn't be expanded on a little bit. But I mean, all of these, I mean, nobody's, all the people looking at it at the polls are not, they're not even going to read that. As far as the special act, it could be shorter. That's my thought on that, but whatever. The second, what did I, I mean, I have...
Part one.
Part one.
You don't mind if we break up sections here? And I happen to feel very much allied to your position on this. I have spoken with the mayor, and the mayor was wanting to try to make this as simple as possible.
Now, I'm saying this, I don't know if the city attorney would want all this.
Right, just one B.
But maybe there could be something in between the two.
So that won't be option one, A, B?
Option, yeah, option one, A, B. I'm, I either, well, I don't feel, I felt that one B kind of covered what we needed to do and gave the city the right to decide what the procedures were by ordinance. And it's laid out in the charter that the procedures would be defined by ordinance, and that seemed pretty clear. And I felt very comfortable that that met the criteria for the charter. I would run that by the attorney and see what he said. Does anyone else disagree with that thinking? Mr. Pete, Counselor Pete.
I would just say, I agree with that with the, I think, you know, for the purpose of not having too many more of these meetings, one course of action I might respectfully suggest is that if you want to go with the one B option to say, "We're gonna go with this and send it to the city solicitor with an agreement that if he says, 'No, this isn't enough detail,'" we'll do the other one. Like, if we can just agree with that in principle, that might streamline things a little bit. But I think if everyone feels that it's okay, then it's fine. I think the only reason we'd want to add that additional detail is just our recollections from 2019 of the solicitor specifically wanting a lot of detail. It's really, it's not a preference of mine, or I think I can speak for Dan's, it's not a preference of Dan's, that it be extremely long and detailed. It's just, the last time we tried to do one of these, we got feedback from the solicitor that he wanted everything very, very explicitly written out, and so that's what we attempted to do. But if this time around, that's not the feeling from the solicitor, then I don't think we have any objection to having it be streamlined.
Comments? Please, I'm asking for comments.
Something that I can see from one and, I mean, one, one B is, I have a question, and maybe you guys already answered. I don't recall the answer. We have the ballot, right? And we have nine candidates for six, for four positions. So when I rank them, my first four, that I go to one, two, three, four? And that means it's one, 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 one. You know what I mean? Or that doesn't make what I'm saying?
I understand what you're asking.
You know what I'm, you know what I'm asking, right? So the one, two, four to me in my brain, because I'm going to rank them, they are like, okay, it's one, two, four, but in reality, it's one, one, one. And five, six, seven, and eight is reality, two, two, two. Kinda, or am I not quite correct?
We need to see a ballot.
I don't know if everybody understands what I'm asking.
I do.
I don't, maybe.
Jason, I mean, I can speak to it if you'd like.
No, I understand the example Counselor Terrell has.
Educate me.
Sure. I think what, my interpretation of what you're asking is, is doing one, two, three, four for your four favorites equivalent to our current system where you are giving each one of your four preferences a dot?
Correct. That's my first choice.
Yes. And the answer there is yes. Functionally, yes. Your two, three, and four, because they're not hurting anybody above, lower-ranked votes don't impact anyone above that. And because four people are being elected, and we're using proportional representation, so that's those surplus votes. If someone gets too many, transfer over. So mathematically, the answer is yes. You are not sacrificing anything. You are giving more information, but you're, you're not, you're not giving any less information than these are the four people that I want. It's a little bit counterintuitive. I understand that because, because all of a sudden, you're saying, "Well, this is my fourth choice."
Correct.
But because we're electing four people, mathematically, it's equivalent to that block of dot, 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 dot.
And that is my question.
And that, yeah.
So because basically, if I do, it's nine candidates, and I choose one, two, three, four, and then I choose Omar Gomez as the fifth, in reality, Omar Gomez is second choice? How can you explain me that, how it works?
Yes. So because there's more information given, we...
And I'm sorry that I'm being...
No, no, no.
No, no, it's fine.
No, but I'm...
This was actually my biggest concern when I was first learning about multi-winner ranked choice voting, was how does this compare to first past the post, choose four? And my simple answer is mathematically, it is equivalent to that. You're not giving up anything. Those one, two, three, four are mathematically the same as doing your four dots. The other, the remaining candidates, it's not like they're all the same as number two. Whoever's five has much more likelihood they're going to receive transfer votes first, and then six, and then seven. So you are expressing a preference of who you want to be over the others. But remember, all of that is bonus, because under our current system, once you fill in four dots, that's it. There's no preferences at all. So I don't want to, I wouldn't agree to say that it's all second choice, but I would say that it's sort of secondary to your preferences up to the number of seats that are being elected. So if there's six being elected, your one through six are kind of your primary, and then everything else is kind of your secondary, even though within those, you're still expressing a preference.
And that will be my fifth or sixth choice will probably will jump to be the second or third, and the total depends on the oldest people votes?
Correct.
If somebody gets eliminated.
If someone choose, right, I'll throw names, but because I don't, it's Tommy, JT, and JP.
Yep.
And someone wore for our clerk and for the mayor, right?
Yep.
This is my first choice.
Yep.
But someone else can have the other way.
Correct.
So now depends on that. Now, maybe my five and six could help for them to get in.
It could, yes. Now, remember, you need first-choice votes to win.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, and then I turn it away. So all the people's first choice will be the clerk and the mayor, and that will...
The reason that it's mathematically the same is because of the surplus transfer. So, you know, if we didn't have that, if we just did simple ranked choice voting without surplus transfer, if 80% of people, their first choice is for a certain candidate, then that candidate gets all those votes, and then all the people that voted for that candidate, it's like it's eating up too many votes, right? And so the surplus transfer balances it out to be mathematically what happens when you can pick four. Because all those, all that extra that's used on your higher-ranking ones can flow down to two, three, four, et cetera. So again, the actual mathematics of it, we'd have to do a demo, and like, I'm very visual, so like, I have to see it.
And that's why you see me with my hands doing it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
It's like, okay, let me see.
I understand your question immediately, and I unreservedly say that if you go in to an RCV, proportional representation, and you rank four, that is exactly the same as going into a current pick-four election and doing four dots. Yep.
Now, when you say pick ranked four, that means pick four, don't choose anyone else. Is that what you're saying?
If you choose, you can choose someone else, and it does not affect any higher ranking. So if you want to...
As far as your concern.
As far, as far as any candidate's...
As far as any of the votes counting, if your, does your fifth or sixth help against the four?
No.
Could I, could I try and interject? We might need to back up and do some visual stuff here. But this is an important thing about it, is that, here's the way in which this is a little bit different. And when you are casting right now in the first past the post, you know, in our pick-four elections, you're casting four votes.
Right.
In this one...
Can you explain first past the post, just for everybody?
Just plurality.
Plurality, like what we're currently doing.
What we do now.
What we do now, four, top four win, that's it. First past the post, first, like, first cross the finish line.
Yeah, the first, yeah, the top four. I don't know where that term even comes from. I think it's English, but...
It's just that I thought of how I could illustrate this.
Well, keep going.
So the idea is that you're essentially casting four votes, right, one for each of these people? And in this, it's a little bit different in that you are casting a vote, and then if your vote, if the person that was your first choice gets eliminated, your vote moves down, and so on. But also, if the person who was your first choice was massively popular and has way too many votes, then your vote can move down to your second choice as well. The reason why this shakes out is being slightly...
Talk to me about moving down, because I'm...
As in, your vote would count for your second choice?
Why?
Because your first choice already has enough votes to qualify.
So you're saying this isn't only ranked choice voting, this is ranked choice voting with surplus votes moving down?
The surplus votes, once you have more than two candidates, the surplus votes, that extra step of the surplus votes has to be there.
Okay, once you have more than two. I'm thinking of a four-person race.
Can I try a thing?
A four-person race with eight candidates.
Yes.
Okay.
So...
Work me through a situation with four persons to be elected.
Can, before you explain it, I want to apologize that I throw this, but I think it's important for the committee to really understand everything before we make a decision. Because if we understand it, and we understand it completely, it's better for us to explain it too. So that's why I'm asking like how it will be working.
I want to try something that's very quick. Do you mind if I borrow the back of a sheet? And a pen from somebody? So this is plurality. This is what we do now. Imagine you have a bucket, right? And it has four votes in it, and you give each of those votes to the four candidates that you like. Under ranked choice voting, you have, instead of the bucket of four votes, you have your preferences. One, two, three, four, five, et cetera. However, if we are electing four seats, right? What this looks like functionally, your first choice gets all four of your votes, but that's too many. They don't need all of that, right? So then...
So why does your first eight choice get four? You voted for four different people.
You ranked all the people in the order you want, so this is your number-one choice. They get everything.
So all of your number ones go to number one?
Correct, but... Because we have this surplus transfer, that, when that person...
Needs 50%.
That person needs a smaller amount, because there's four seats, and when they reach that threshold...
You're saying needs a smaller amount. What do you mean?
Can I try this one?
Yeah, they need, they need a threshold.
So...
Right, so being 50 plus one, 50%.
No, so for a two-person race, it's 50%.
You explain it, can I make another question? Because I think it's related to this. So when I rank my, I would say my four, right? Even if I rank my four. As someone who's gonna vote, basically, I have to do really my homework to see who's gonna be my first, my second, my third, my four, because should be my, even should be my preference in the four could be like, "I want these four," but in reality, the four, if they didn't get in, I'm gonna run this person four. Kinda, right?
Yeah, you could put someone as fifth behind that.
And that's what I'm saying, like, the...
It's pretty much the same amount of homework that you need to do now to pick the four that you want to win the most. If you pick four unpopular candidates now, they may all not win, you know, if they don't get enough votes in total.
I get it, I just...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So because we have this threshold step...
Threshold step being a number, number being what?
Once a candidate gets enough to meet the threshold...
So each election could have a different threshold. If there's a six-person election...
It's based on the number of seats.
... threshold by a four-person election.
Yes, it's based...
For to be elected.
Yep, and that's actually...
So it's 25% plus one?
It would be 20% plus one.
That's, it's right in here, winning threshold, and it is a value equal to the total number of non-concluded ballots in a race divided by the sum of the number of elected positions remaining in that race plus one, right?
What is a non-concluded?
Sorry, so, okay.
It sounds so simple.
So the number of positions remaining in the race plus one, right? So four.
It's not, no. So what's non-concluded votes? Okay, that's what...
Okay, so in a four-seat election, you need, you need 20% is the threshold.
I have a question, can you keep explaining?
Yeah, yeah.
Is any video?
Yeah, there's some videos. Yeah.
Because we can plug in the computer and watch it there just a second to see it. Maybe that will help us better.
Yeah, perhaps, sure. Do you have one in mind?
I don't think that would be a good idea, because I've seen some, probably would beg it, but...
I agree with you.
Yeah, there are some good ones. I don't...
I need to go grab the computer.
No, immediately, but I can, I can try and find one.
I think it will help us to understand it a little better. And again, the question is, because if we understand it completely, I think it's really easy for us to sell it too.
Yeah, yeah. Is it P-whatever Gray? Do you remember that one with the animal kingdom ones?
The Animal Kingdom, yeah.
Yeah.
RCV for dummies.
About me?
No, no.
I'm in that group, Trump.
I think the Animal Kingdom one is a good one, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good place to start.
It's a little Youtubey. It's a little corny. But as long as it gets the message across, like Omar said, we're gonna have a much easier time selling this if we can fully understand it.
Absolutely.
In an applicable manner, because if we're having a hard time understanding it, John Q. Public is also gonna have a hard time understanding it. If we can have a cookie cutter response to explain it easily, I think it's gonna help everybody.
Does this allow me to cast airplane?
I don't know, but we can plug that in, and it'll cast to it. Here's the, while he's setting that up, I'll explain the, just to respond to what you said. The really important thing, here's what, if you don't, you don't need to understand the math of this. I would like everyone to understand the math of this, but you don't need to understand the math behind it to understand how it works. Here's how it works. As a voter, you rank your choices, as many or as few as you'd like, from your favorite to the last one you want to rank. Then math happens, and again, we can explain that math, but it's not essential that you understand the math to understand it. And then at the end, the result of that math is that the candidates who proportionally represent the voters the best are the ones who are elected, which is to say, if there's one candidate who, you know, like, if there's a, if there's a, say, if you're talking about a community, you know, this comes up a lot in, well, let's bring it up here. If a quarter of the people who show up to vote are Republicans, then probably one of the people who wins will be a Republican. If a quarter of the people who show up are, or half of the people who show up are Democrats, then probably half of the candidates will be Democrats, and it might not be party affiliation, because it's local politics. It might be pro, for, or against a big project or whatever, but whatever the thing is that people care about, it's gonna...
Your brain when you're struggling.
So that's...
You found one?
This is mad.
In the focus. And this is your brain when you're in the zone.
Queen Lion is looking to make the elections in her Animal Kingdom more fair. Currently, she divides her citizens into ranges, each of which selects one representative to go to the Jungle Council, which makes laws for the kingdom. But her citizens are unhappy, and it's easy to see why. The council is full of monkeys. Of course, some of her citizens are monkeys, but not all of them. This council doesn't fairly represent her kingdom. Queen Lion visits one of the ranges to find out what's wrong and how to fix it. In this range, there are five monkeys, four tigers, three owls, two lynx, and one buffalo. One of each runs for representative, and all citizens vote for their own species. The election rule is that the candidate with the most votes wins, which is the monkey. But it's a pretty unsatisfying result, considering that two-thirds of the citizens in this range aren't monkeys and wouldn't vote for monkeys. This is the same across all the ranges of the kingdom. The monkeys always happen to have more votes than anybody else, so they win all the elections, even though they're a minority of the total population. Closer inspection reveals that the independent advisors hired to draw the range boundaries in the first place weren't as independent as they might have appeared. The result is unhappy citizens who don't trust the Jungle Council to make the fairest laws for all, quite rightly. Now, Queen Lion wants to maximize the number of citizens happy with the election results. One way to do that is to abolish the ranges and use a proportional system. But her citizens want local representatives. So Queen Lion needs a system that both makes her citizens happier by having a more representative council while keeping the local elections in. After doing a little research, she finds out how: single, transferable vote. The big change with STV is that ranges send more than one representative, which may seem weird, but Queen Lion decides to test it out. She takes three ranges, which used to each send one representative, and combines them into one bigger range that will send three. On election day, citizens go to the polls, and the results in this new range are just the same as they were in the old ranges. So nothing seems better, but with STV, to figure out the winners, take the total votes and divide them by the number of representatives needed, in this case, three, which gives 33% as the amount a candidate needs to win. So all three candidates go to the council, which accurately represents the citizens in the range. Whereas under the old system, each individual range would have sent a monkey, leaving two-thirds of the citizens without representation. A bigger range with multiple winners allows the results to be more proportional. This test turned out well, but it was also as simple as could be. Now, Queen Lion wants to see what happens in a race where not everybody is a winner. The next big range she tests has five candidates running for office: Gorilla, Tarsier, Monkey, Tiger, and Lynx, three of which can be representatives. Election day comes and goes, and here are the results of the citizens' first choices. Tarsier gets 5%, Gorilla gets 28%, Monkey gets 33%, Tiger gets 21%, and Lynx gets 13%. As before, a candidate needs 33% to win. Monkey has that, and so is immediately selected as one of the three representatives. But no one else reached the winning 33%, so how are the other two representatives selected? Step one: get rid of the biggest loser. Sorry, Tarsier, you really had no chance at all. When the citizens voted, they could have just put an X next to the candidate they liked best, but with STV, they can also rank their favorite candidates. This is important because it shows how the election would have turned out if one of the candidates hadn't run. Tiny and worried Tarsiers would have voted for the big, calm Gorilla without Tarsier in the race. So if their candidate can't win, they want their votes to go to the Gorilla instead. This pushes Gorilla up to 33%, and he becomes the next representative. Ranking allows citizens to support their favorite candidate without worrying. There's no point in strategizing about how everyone else is going to vote. The system works to maximize voter happiness with the result. Now, back to the range. There's still one representative to select, so the next biggest loser is Lynx. His voters don't like Simeons, but they do think Tiger's interests are similar to theirs, and so if Lynx can't win, they want Tiger to get their votes. His voters don't like simians, but they do think Tiger's interests are similar to theirs, and so if Lynx can't win, they want Tiger to get their votes. He reaches thirty-three percent and becomes the third and final representative. The election results look pretty good, especially considering the citizens' first and second choices. Now more citizens also have a local representative they can feel comfortable approaching, whereas using the old system, everybody gets a monkey. Lastly, Queen Lion wants to know what happens in a range with just two political parties. Under the most votes win system, multiple candidates from the same party would be a disaster. They'd split their voters and hand the win to their opposition. Queen Lion makes one last test range with two-thirds tigers and one-third gorillas. That, as before, needs three representatives. Because citizens rank their candidates under S T V, there can be more than one candidate from the same party running at the same time without any problems. The Tigers run two candidates, as do the gorillas. On election day, White Tiger gets a massive amount of first-choice votes, probably because he's so cool. Meanwhile, the gorillas are split between their new guy and the old silverback. White Tiger is selected as the first representative, but what happens next? While Tiger is the biggest loser, and it seems like he should be eliminated, it's also obvious that he would have gotten way more votes if White Tiger wasn't in the race. If a candidate has more votes than they need, like White Tiger does, the first step is to give the extra votes to their second choice. This gets Tiger to thirty-three percent, and he becomes the next representative. If that seems strange, there are two things to consider. If instead the extra votes were ignored and Tiger eliminated, then the gorillas would get the remaining two wins, which would obviously not be representing the range very well. And ignoring extra votes punishes citizens who back popular candidates, which gets us back to the problem where voters start thinking about how everyone else will vote rather than what they really want. If a candidate is able to get more votes than they really need, then it also means those who support him are a big section of the population, and thus fairly should get more representation. Right. After the extra votes go to Tiger, the election finishes as before. Silverback came in last, is eliminated, and his voter's second choice is the younger candidate, so it's in. And the results look fair. Queen Lion has seen S T V work. Whether a range has one party or lots of parties, the process is still always the same. First, citizens rank their favorite candidates. Second, any candidate above the threshold wins immediately. Extra votes then go to their next choice. If there's no winner, the last place is eliminated, and the votes go to their next choice, repeat until all the winners are found. This whole process is designed to maximize the number of citizens who are happy with the result. And it gives S T V many advantages over the old most votes win system. Citizens can honestly vote for their favorite candidate without worrying about what everyone else is going to do. It's more proportional, so monkeying with the borders matters less. And almost all citizens will have a local representative they actually voted for. In the end, Queen Lion decides to switch the council's elections to single transferable vote to make a better jungle council for all.
Perhaps a Roman.
A quick question. I have two questions now. So is is fair to say that it's better for me to protect my first four, to rank all of them? To rank, if we have ten candidates for four positions, to protect my four first. Is is better for for my first four candidates for me to rank all of them? Because I would I would say that if, right?
You need to, because if you don't rank somebody, your vote will never go to them.
Correct. So to protect my first four, I should rank all of them?
Yes. The big difference here is that by only voting for one, you're not helping that person anymore than if you rank others.
That's why I'm making the question.
Yes.
Because if I rank my first four, but I didn't rank the red six, in reality, I'm I I can make these ones less stronger in a way. Because I'm not ranking all of them. How how?
No.
How these other six, how they're gonna how they're gonna be ranked? Or in my ballot, that doesn't count.
Yeah. So your vote will not count for a can, so you've got your first-choice candidate, right?
No.
Your vote in the first, when you start counting, is gonna count for that, your first-choice candidate. Your that vote is not gonna start counting towards your second-choice candidate until one of two things happens. A, your first-choice candidate gets enough votes that they are over the line, and then some of those extra votes are gonna go to those people's second choices. Or B, those that candidate has so few votes that they are eliminated, and their votes are gonna go to the second choice. So the point is like you're, if you vote for your top four, voting for a fifth or a sixth or a seventh is not in any way going to hurt your top four or help.
No, I'm.
Or help. It's just.
Because what about if I said, okay, I'm gonna vote, gonna rank everybody, but I'm gonna vote for Omar Gomez number ten, because I want all my Gomez to have really low percentage when they do that. It's not gonna affect it?
No, your vote is not gonna count. Your.
You know what I mean?
I'm not entirely sure what you're asking in that question.
It's what I think I hear, please tell me if I'm not hearing, is that does the tenth, number ten ranking affect, one way or another, how that vote gets calculated? If you're going to somebody else or taking away from your votes moving down?
No, it doesn't affect anything moving up, because your ballot has to go in order through all of your ranks. If someone's eliminated or someone's been elected, it'll 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 jump over that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it has to go in that order. So any lower preference that you said that you indicate has no effect on higher preferences, none whatsoever. So if you want an equivalent amount of say that you would have in the current system, you would rank four for four seats. But you have the option, of course, of ranking fewer.
Yeah.
You can just pick one or two. Unlike our current system, that does not help the one or two that you pick. Because currently, by not choosing four, by only choosing one or only choosing two, you are helping those candidates at the expense of being able to pick four.
And that's what I'm trying to say, like it's better to rank all of them if I.
Yes, yes. You're not gaining anything by.
No.
Prevent by by not ranking.
Doing it, probably I will help mine about one of my number two, number three, number four.
Correct.
Yeah.
The added benefit is that you also get to rank five, six, seven, as many as you want, and that's just extra preference.
Okay.
That's just, instead of your ballot just being like, well, I voted for four people who didn't win. Oh, you you're, it's actually coming into play. Oh, this is my fifth choice, this is my sixth choice. If you rank somebody last, you're not helping them at all.
I have a, I have probably, and then, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but I.
Please, uh, uh, this is an open, an open meeting, I appreciate that.
So, um, so what about, and now I'm asking for Barbara. What about if the election night, something crazy happened? How Barbara will do and hand count if the machines blow out or not?
There's a recount.
Oh, it's a recount. How how Barbara and her team will do it?
Is that a question for Barbara or for you? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, I have done this.
Let me also say, I, that was one of my major questions tonight, so you you nailed it.
I have done this.
How do we do?
Uh, we make piles. And when things transfer, we put post-its on them for what the fractional transfer is. And it's quite simple. It's surprisingly simple, right? Because we get that transfer value, we multiply it by one. It's now worth that when it transfers. And then if it transfers again, we have its previous value, we have the new transfer value. We multiply them, we cross it out on the post-it, we write down the new one, and it goes in the new pile.
To to try to help Barbara, so, not, and and to try to understand that better.
Yeah.
Right? Barbara, I got the ball. This is the ball. Okay, Omar Gomez, Omar, right, whatever.
Yep.
Omar have thirty votes, uh, rank number one. Omar Gomez have fifteen, rank number two.
We don't even care.
We don't even care.
We don't even care. We are gonna make piles of all the number one votes.
So the Omar pile would be a pile of thirty votes.
And then depends of the percentage of how many votes I got, then you go to the second one.
Right, so if you under this, if you got that thirty-three exactly.
Threshold, correct.
Another question, another question.
All those are done, and we just look at number two.
Well, I just, you, I mean, you can look at it with ten ballots or twenty ballots, but if you're looking at it with two thousand ballots, like a citywide thing.
Yeah, nationwide hand count.
Yeah, they don't do, they don't use computers.
Like, this, Ireland has this system for the, oh, God, Kelsey's gonna kill me for not being a tea suck. Uh, she's been trying to teach me Irish, uh, the the their parliament. Um, uh, but they they, this is the system they use for their parliament. And they do a hand count, um, using this, so they do exactly what what Dan said. They they count up the ballots and they put them in in boxes, and then, you know, as Pete, if someone gets eliminated, okay, well, then we're gonna transfer these ballots over to this box or, you know. And and then, okay, this person got enough, they're qualified, and there's there's the surplus, so we're gonna make a note of what the surplus is and move those to those people's second choices, and and you do it like that. But it it would take a few hours, and it would be a headache, but it could totally be done.
Oh, yeah. It it's not something that keeps me up at night. You just need a bunch of post-its.
Okay.
And and a calculator is helpful.
I know, I know you understand this very well. But as you go zip, zip, zip to the hot, I I need to follow it and know and and be able to count.
Okay.
If I can't count the votes and be able to know, oh, this is the pro, and understand the process, I'm very unhappy.
So.
So.
Can I?
Now, maybe not everybody feels the same way. Maybe everybody feels these, I, it's a great system, I love it. I trust the computers, I trust the hand counters. I don't have to understand how, when and when I vote, I go, okay, I know they can count my vote for this candidate and that candidate and this candidate, and I, you know, this candidate had that many, that one had this many.
Can I?
I can understand that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, maybe other people don't need to, and that's fine. Barb, I had a question for you in terms of, I would think you would have to understand.
No.
With the calculation.
I, single winner in my head, I can understand it a little better. Even that, I still don't know how to test it. Multi-winner, I mean, I won't have to deal with this. So this is something that, um, I and I don't know, I mean, I think it's complicated, but, and I think the voters, I mean, we have a program. Ballots run through, the computer does it, and if everything goes good, and it's all programmed correctly, and we trust our election vendor, which I do, but they're not perfect, they're human. Um, then that's fine. It's it's just testing, a recount, and do do the people on the street understand how the vote votes work? I mean, I think it's complicated, I mean, and you know, the voting public. I I don't know, are they gonna, are they gonna trust the computer? Are they gonna understand how it works? I, you know, that that's that's always been my special confusion with multi-winner. But.
I I have a guess that maybe at least a third of the people won't trust the computer.
Yeah.
And that's way too many people not to trust a system of counting and and calculating votes. I have another question for you, Barb. In terms of, do you have a post-test for validation?
No.
After this, never?
No, there's always a test beforehand. You mark ballots up, you run up, you do a hand count, you run them through the computer, you you compare it with the slip. Now, with the ranked choice voting, I I don't know how, I can check, I can, um, check like the first ranking to make sure it matches, but beyond that, I I don't know.
So.
There's no way, I don't.
There's no requirement to do a post-test on that by the state that says, okay, we all have that, we all have.
We don't, we don't have.
Do any of the elections on any level?
On a state election, um, the state actually draws. They have a thing where that you, if you're unlucky person, um, they they draw like precincts, and they do an audit by a random audit. I think Holyoke had two the last time.
So they.
That's it, that's the only one that's required.
And it is required on a state level.
Recount.
Yeah, recount is your. That was my next, my next question. Is let's say there's. Unless there's a recount, but now my question is, if we have a recount, I mean, if someone calls for a recount, we know now if they're there. What is, what's the percentage you have to be close to the next person?
Oh, there's.
Five percent or something?
No, there's no requirement.
There's no requirement on any level.
There's no automatic recount. It's it's like, if it's really close, it's, there's no particular, oh, you're within two percent, we do a recount.
So anyone could call for, how does that process?
Call for it unless it was super close.
Oh, I understand.
Never had one in in forty-two years.
You've never had one?
But there's been some that have been ties, but there's recounts all the time out there, but they're usually very, very close.
So that recount would be a a machine recount or a hand recount at that point?
You hand count it.
Your hand count. Tom, you waited patiently. Thank you.
Um, you had before, I I don't, it's, I don't wanna turn away from that, but I I had made a point, and you had made a comment about how I was going too fast, and then turned to some other things that I could talk about, but I'd want to attempt to do this a little bit slower.
Please, have at it. I appreciate your.
So if we're talking about this in terms of, let's just say that there is a multi-winner ranked choice election for at-large city councillor, and in the moment after the polls close, a massive solar flare destroys all of our equipment. So we no longer have computers, we no longer have machines, we have to hand count every single vote. I'm going to, if I, I'm I'm speaking as slowly as I can because you, because you had said I was speaking too quickly, and I know I do this sometimes. So if I, if I come out speaking too slowly, I apologize.
I appreciate that.
Correct. Let's say that councillor Terrell is the only at-large candidate here, is a candidate in that race. For that race with four people, with the way that it's set up, in any ranked choice voting election, the threshold for winning is, in terms of percentage, is one over the number of candidates. No, sorry, the number of winners plus one. So in a single-person election, it'd be one over one plus one. It's one over two, fifty percent plus one. In a four per, four-winner election, it is one over four plus one, so one over five is twenty percent plus one. You need twenty percent of the vote plus one vote to be qualified as a winner. That is the threshold of victory. Now, let's say that in this race.
Thank you, that's very understandable.
Okay. Let's say that in this race, councillor Terrell gets exactly that number of votes. We're gonna go through three scenarios here. Let's say that councillor Terrell gets exactly that number of votes.
Percent plus one.
Twenty percent plus one. Councillor Terrell is immediately declared a winner. Because there's no surplus votes, there's nothing to reallocate, there's just, councillor Terrell is in right there, and there's.
Because he received exactly the number of twenty percent plus one.
Yes.
No surplus, no underage, he made it twenty percent plus one.
Now, let's say that councillor Terrell received ten votes more than the threshold. Well, this is the question, right? Those ten votes should not be penalized for voting for a winning candidate, right? So what we need to do now is look at the people who voted for councillor Terrell and who their second choices were. And let's just say for simplicity that half of those people voted for one person, and the other half voted for another person as their second choice. There's ten surplus votes, so half of those, five, we would, we would take and put in the, we we, and allocate to the, uh, to that, to the second choice A, and five, we would allocate to second choice B. And then councillor Terrell is the winner, and we keep, is one of the winners, and we keep counting.
Well, there's the tr, transfer value.
Well.
Yeah. Are we ignoring, okay.
Well, it's, I'm trying to to do this this mathematically simply as I can.
Sure, okay.
There's, it's, it's slightly, but it's, it really, that is what you're, we're saying, if it's a fra, a fraction of the votes that were received, this fraction of the surplus votes, and it goes to whoever the second choice of those people were.
Yeah.
So let me see if I can rephrase this, the the surplus votes for councillor Terrell, in this case, were ten. The fractional percentage that they would be allocated at is fifty percent, fifty percent to candidate, to two candidates. But there are ten candidates on the ballot.
So it's in, it's likely to be more fractional than that for the, for simplicity, I'm considering.
They always, those were divided fifty percent.
Because the second, because one person got half of my second-choice votes, the other person got the other half. Correct, that's why they're split proportionally.
And 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 all the rest of the candidates got zero.
Well, if they didn't get any of the second-choice votes, then yes.
Choice votes from.
From councillor Terrell. They may have gotten any number of the first or, yeah, whatever, but that's, we're just talking about this box right now, because we're talking about this. In the situation, we have to do it. Now, let's consider a situation where councillor Terrell does not get enough votes. Now, let's consider a situation where councillor Terrell does not get enough votes to, uh, pres, to, 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 to pass. Sorry, you, you didn't, you didn't win this time. And in fact, you know, after a couple counts, you know, some people get eliminated, you know, it's now, there's, there's six people left or whatever, or five people left, and he's still under that threshold. So at this point councillor Terrell is eliminated.
He's had the least amount of the remain.
Yes, of the, yeah. And so then, we are going to look at who each of those people in councillor Terrell's box voted for as their second-choice vote, and allocate those votes to each of those candidates.
If they're applicable to any of the candidates that are left.
Yes.
Okay.
And if they're, if they're not, then you go.
The next one down.
The next one down and the next one down until you find a candidate that is still there. Now, if they just put you, we have nothing to do, so that is when a vote becomes what we call exhausted. Well, they didn't put us, we don't have a place to move it, so that, that vote is, you know, it's the same as, you know, if you go in and vote for just one candidate and that candidate comes in sixth in our current system, well, you know, that's it. You didn't, you didn't indicate any other preference, we can't second-guess what, so that is an exhaustive vote. But as so long as each of those peers, people that are in councillor, the councillor trail box, as long as each of them has a continuing candidate that is on the ballot, their vote will go to their highest, that ballot will go to their, their highest continuing candidate. The highest candidate that continues in the race. And we'll do that until four candidates have gotten over twenty percent of the vote. At that point, there is no mathematical way that any further candidates could possibly win, and so the election is called for those four people.
That video was great, by the way, that helped, that video helped a lot with the line.
It's a good video.
It really did, it was simple, but.
So that's, now, the, the, the system, like, we have a, you know, uh, we have a, like, a, we have a, a program that does this in seconds, but like, but that's, that's really all it is, is just say, has anyone won? No. Or if yes, then figure out what to do with their surplus. If no, then eliminate the, the worst performing candidate and move their votes to their highest continuing candidate. Now, has anyone won? And then you just do that over and over until four people, in this case, four people, and the school committee, six people, have won.
Right.
So it's, would it be a headache to do manually, like, it would take a few hours, it would be stressful, or like, you know, you need to make sure you're getting everything right. But it, it is, people do this. Cambridge, for years, hand-counted these votes, and now Cambridge would have like nineteen candidates on the ballot, so it would be a complete nightmare. I don't really see that happening in East Hampton, even if it did, like, it's doable, it's just a pain in the neck.
Yeah, Cambridge has a whole different system too. Cambridge is not, is an unusual system.
And they've actually shifted to, a lot closer to what we are doing in order to get away from that hand count and all that.
I think you made very clear what a surplus vote is, I think you made clear what an exhaustive vote is.
Mm-hmm.
And, that's okay, you had mentioned transferable votes, which.
Well.
Yeah, I don't, quite a kind of.
I have another.
You have another issue.
Yeah, which is, I would be a strong advocate of the first time we do this, we do a hand count, open to the public.
You know what, I'm thinking about, I know Barbara.
Transparency.
Not for Barbara.
Barbara is gonna be tired for the next.
No, I know, but, but, I mean, I think that would be it.
No, but I gotta tell you, but I gotta tell you what I was thinking about that, and, and if you allow me to.
Please, I think it would be fun.
I was thinking about, about, but no, but I was thinking about, I was thinking about that, I'm gonna tell you the reasons why. Um, this is new, right? And for you to look like it's super simple and super easy, for all, how many have I, two, four, or six? For all six here, look like it's not that simple, right? For, in something that people was being asking for years, is trans, transparency, especially when it's a vote. I, I want, I want my vote to be counted, and counted the right way. And the only way to prove it, that we're doing this and this is working, is doing what he said.
It's what I wanna do.
Yeah, I think that would be.
I know it's great, I know I sound crazy, but I, I, I can agree with it.
Maybe just like a sample thing, but if using a real election, I think that would be.
Maybe sample would be good, because.
So here, let, let me interject for one quick second. It's not atypical, in my understanding, is if there are hand-counted votes for the election to be announced within the twenty-four hours, is that?
Yeah.
So the next day, you get to the results.
You would use the computer, I mean, that would be, those would be the results.
What, what you're suggesting is a hand count, and a hand count isn't gonna be as fast as a computer, depending on how many candidates and how much is gonna happen.
I, I'm suggesting that it would be done for.
Walk away that night with it.
For illustrative purposes, after using the computer.
You would not do your official.
There's no reason to delay the results.
Correct, no, no, no.
But we can have an event.
I, I think it should be, the first time it should be both.
Yeah.
The computer result, results, and then, I mean, I know it's really complicated.
I would just say, like, you could do that later on, if you wanted, or maybe, like, well, you couldn't do it, you'd have to for the, like, you could do like three thousand votes.
I mean, you can do it, you can do it three months after, I, and what.
Don't, don't mess up, you know, the results, you know, with the turning over of, I mean, I think that's craziness.
So you suggest, you, what you're suggesting is that the results come in by computer, and that then there'd be a hand count at some point.
To educate the public.
Sooner rather than later, maybe not.
Not just the public, including the people that are working.
Correct.
Right? Because how they gonna do it by hand if they are not being trained?
Right.
Well, you wouldn't have, I mean, no recount brings in all your election workers. You have, you know, counters.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You, you wouldn't have every single election worker working, you don't want that.
Because as, because as a, as a someone who's gonna vote, right, I voted my first time using ranked choice voting. Someone in the street said, you know what, I, I think you waste your time. And, you know what, I really care, I voted because I thought I understand it, but at the end, some people throw some stuff, so like, I was, oh man, I don't know if, if the computer really count the way that I want it. I think that it will resolve an issue that I will keep continuing voting because I will understand it. I know that the computer really do what I was looking for. Because now probably I will start saying, oh, you know, I vote the first time, it's still complicated for me, I don't trust the computer, David didn't do it by hand, next time I'm not voting.
Is there a way to do the elect, to do like a sample election before we do the election?
Yeah, there's, there's too much going on.
That way, and that way, you have some sort of.
I mean, if you wanted to do like a demonstration.
Mm-hmm, a demonstration election.
Okay, but I, don't, don't complicate it.
And demonstration would be good, what, two hundred ballots? That would be a fair number or?
You could do it with any number.
Yeah, but I, but I, we don't wanna be here days doing like, you know, by hand.
I mean, do it with the, um, the number that would be cast in a precinct in a real election. Do it with a thousand.
Just randomly generate some votes if you wanted.
Do it with a thousand, do it with eight hundred or.
You're done?
I just wanna say something quick, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but something Omar said caught my ear when he said, you know, a, as, as somebody voting, he wants his vote to count. Well, his votes, and I think this would be a, a good angle to, to educate the public on, his vote's gonna count more in ranked choice voting. Because like, like you said earlier, if you, you vote for just for one person, that person, that vote's exhausted then. Whereas if that first vote, something happens, then the second vote counts, so theoretically, your vote counts more in ranked choice voting than it does in the traditional style, which we're doing now.
Depends how many you rank, but yes.
So assuming you rank them and go properly through the, through the procedure, okay, okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't count more in the sense that you're getting more votes or anything like that.
No, but you're.
But you can influence.
More than just one vote, whoops, no.
Exactly.
You're able to more precisely state your preferences.
Thank you, yes, okay.
Gonna have a question. I'm trying to follow all of what you said, more precisely.
Because if.
I'm, I'm not sure.
By, by saying your, your vote is more, so if, if, if I vote.
Sir, you're talking about surplus votes now, for example. You, you have a surplus.
If my first vote is Omar, my second vote is you.
Right.
And Omar has the lowest right off the bat, and Omar's eliminated, then, then my vote for you.
If your vote goes to the second person.
Which is you.
That's, that's an up, what'd you call it, an up, not an up vote, but it, uh, it's not a surplus vote.
Transfer.
Transfer vote, yeah. Transfer from the, from the losing candidate to.
Instead of me just voting for Omar, and then Omar not getting enough votes, and then I'm an exhausted vote, if I, if I vote for Omar one and you two, Omar gets the lowest number of votes and that's eliminated, then my transfer vote goes to you. So my, technically, my vote is valued more because instead of being dead after once, it can bump, bump down the line, right?
Actually, in this case, four votes get counted more.
Right, I was just using two as an example.
Because your votes were for ten presumably, your first choice gets thrown out.
It just bumps everything else up one notch.
It bumps it up one notch, now those four are still four votes that are being counted for you, from you, right? Because.
Cause your two becomes one, your three becomes two, your four becomes three, your five becomes four.
Everything gets bumped up.
Everything gets bumped up, whereas if, in, in, in a plurality, you're, you're bumped up, and you don't have a chance to get bumped up.
You allocate. Correct, correct. You can't allocate to more than one.
Correct.
There's no transfer.
You can use up to four.
Right.
That's what I was trying to.
I got it.
Thank you.
Trying to illustrate with this, which is that, this, you, you vote for those four, it's locked in. This, you know, it starts at one and then it filters down through, and, and, you know, and you have that much, you have an equivalent amount of say because we do that surplus.
Instead of your say being limited because you only voted, okay, okay, I'm good, I'm good, thank you.
Please.
So I, I wanna make a simple but important point about what we're talking about in regards to surplus, because we're talking about surpluses. The way that we do this is mathematically proportional. So when a candidate is elected and they get more than they need, back in the day, let's go to Cambridge in nineteen forty, they didn't have computers. They said, how do we pick which ones move? Right? Cause we're not moving all of them.
Right.
If someone gets eliminated, we're moving all of them.
But you only do the surplus.
But if the surplus, it's this extra amount, right? So someone got a hundred votes, that was the threshold, but they got a hundred and ten, right?
How do you pick those ten votes?
How do you pick those ten, right?
From, from which, from which?
Ballot.
From the ca, the candidate got, got too many, so a hundred and ten people voted, they only needed a hundred to win. And so ten transfer, how do we, how do we pick which, right?
When you say pick which, you're saying from which, from which voter?
Yeah, which ballots move.
Ballot moves.
Out of those hundred and ten, which ten ballots move?
So back in, a hundred years ago, we said, this was a problem, this was a, how do we do this? Right? And Cambridge said, okay, we're going to number them, they're all gonna be sequential, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. This makes it deterministic. We figure out a proportion, we go to the closest thing, so maybe it's one out of twelve, maybe it's one out of eight. And we take one and we skip seven, and we take one and we skip seven, and we take one and we skip. That's great for nineteen forty, proportionally, statistically, fine. We don't need to do that because we have math. Technically, they had math in nineteen forty, it's just multiplication, it's not that hard, right? What we do is we look at all of those, every one hundred and ten, but we give them a fraction.
What fraction?
The amount of the surplus, right? So it's that, it's the same as, it's ten votes worth, but spread out over a hundred and ten.
More representative of the, of the lot.
It doesn't matter the sequence that you do it, it's always deterministic. We don't need to worry about, we picked one and we skipped some, and we picked one and we skipped some, we just look at every single one and we give it a small amount of it, and then that moves. And that's what we keep track with the post-its. The post-it goes onto the ballot, we, we figure out the transfer value, which is gonna be a number between zero and one, put it on the post-it, then take it to the second-choice pile. When we add them all up, we add up the number on the post-its, not one, two, three, we say, okay, there's a number on the post-it, we add that up. There's a number on the post-it, we add that up.
Cause that number represents the pers, the proportion of people who would have voted, or did.
The surplus.
Did vote for this candidate in the surplus.
Right, because they got more votes than they needed.
So you'll have ten, presumably ten second-choice candidates, and ten people would get a percentage, right?
If you add up all of the, all of the transfers, right, it would equal ten. You, you, these little bits of each ballot all add up to ten, the equivalent of ten. So instead of just ten people having their second votes, everybody has their seconds, but just in a little, little part of the pie. That's how.
All equal to one another.
Oh, yeah.
All equal.
All proportional to one.
Yeah.
Like within, you know, if one person gets more second votes than another, within.
Well, they're gonna get more.
Then they're gonna get a bigger transfer.
But each ballot is.
Yes, each ballot is, is counted.
Same transfer value.
Yep. And, and I, I, I bring this up not to overcomplicate things, but because when you're trying to understand this, it's the logical next step, and you, because it's just like, as soon as you get surplus, you're like, which ballots do I move? How do I pick them? And this is how, this is how we pick them.
You don't pick them, you.
Well, we don't pick them, exactly.
You don't pick them.
Exactly.
You count them.
That, that's what it solves, is the need to pick them at all.
Actually, count them.
Yeah, we count all of them, but we just use fractions to do it.
Yes. I like that, that, that.
It is, it's an elegant solution.
Makes sense.
It involves more math, but it's more elegant.
But when we're talking math, we're talking addition, subtraction, multiplication, division, like, we're not talking derivatives.
No calculus.
Yeah, anything, like, it's, this is all stuff, like, we, we could get.
High schoolers easily could do that.
Like, sixth graders to do this math, like, we could just get a, a class full of sixth graders and to, like, they all know how to do the math, like, it's, they might make mistakes, you probably don't wanna do that, but like, they all know how, like, these are all, these are the things that every single person in East Hampton knows how to do.
I love the idea of it.
Yeah, I think that's a really fun idea. Maybe we could get like the high schoolers to cast, cause when I was in, I remember when I was in, uh, even elementary school, there was like, there was a presidential election, they had all the kids in the elementary school cast their votes, just to like, practice voting. You could do something like that, and, and just have them, you, you know, to get some little blurbs for them to read about the candidates, and they can rank them, and then, you know, go through the process of doing it and show how it works.
Or you can do cookies or.
Yeah, you can do, yeah, whatever, anything people have a preference about.
When, when one looks at the.
I say crumble cookies are the best one.
There you go.
Let's do that one.
Dan, when one looks at the math from an actual calculation of, say, four thousand votes times ten potential candidates in an election with four to be elected, is it possible to explain the actual mathematics to people?
I just did.
I think we've explained it and we understand it conceptually, but to draw it out numerically so that folks could understand.
It's actually, all the math that you need is on this page.
And that, if, if I'm allowed.
Like, it, it's a matter of how you visualize it, how you explain it, how you diagram it, like, how, people have different learning styles, and some people need to see it, some people need to do it, some people need to be told it, et cetera. But you don't, there's nothing, there's nothing missing from this.
Okay.
All the math is right here.
I think inherent, I think inherently the public, I, I'm thinking of, of transparency.
Yeah.
And I want there to be as much transparency in the process as there could possibly be. I don't want people going away saying, shaking their heads, really not getting a good sense of how this all gets counted, because it's complicated, it is. But it's also understandable, and you're saying that different, there's different learning styles. How does one, how does one best educate?
I think, I think honestly, my opinion is to see it done.
That's what helped, I, it's, sorry, can I?
That helped, yes, please, yeah.
So I'm saying, that, that really made it click for me, seeing that, I mean, just made it, things fall into place a little bit better. And I know that was simple, but that just kinda really.
But you see it.
Right, it's more, yeah, it's visual.
So the last time we did ranked choice voting, we put a bunch of information up on the website about it in English and Spanish. We funded a mailer to go out to people with a bunch of stuff and saying, here's, more information can be found here, so we could do a similar thing there. I wanna just say this one thing, and.
I wanna just say this one thing and I, I wanna say this by first saying, I absolutely think we should do that again. I think that was right, if anything, we should do it on a larger scale. But I, this is, I think this is a sort of an, an important point when, when you start talking about all of this is you don't need to understand the math to understand that if you rank your choices from your favorite to your least favorite and everyone else in town does that, then the people who are elected to the multi-member body will be proportional to the preferences of the public.
Period.
And then if you want to understand how that works, because I think it's personally kind of cool, you know, here are some links on how to do it, but if you're, like, I just think it is, it is important to understand that there isn't, there is no deep strategy, there's no deep way to game this. If you think you, if you really, really want somebody to be on the city council, then always the thing that you should do is put them first. And then you should put the person you want second, second. And then if, at some point, you're like, well, I don't really know about those people, then you can stop voting, but there is a chance if you do that, if all of your candidates just get, just totally creamed, then like, it is possible that your vote might not count because you didn't put enough people. But like, I don't think that, like, it's just to say that, like, we should do everything we can to educate people. I love the idea of demonstrations. I love the idea of, yeah, maybe we could get some of the civic education people we know to create a video specifically for East Hampton. Like, there's all sorts of stuff we could do and we have time to do it. But you could go in and just say, well, this person's my favorite, this person's my second favorite, this person's my third favorite. And you're not missing some insight that would cause you to vote differently. Like, this thing is designed to incentivize people to vote in order of their preference. And there's no situation where you'd want to reorder them and it would somehow help your candidate, your favorite candidates win more than just voting for them in order of your true preference.
Question about gaming the system for a moment. Let's say people get frustrated and they say, we got 10 candidates, you got four positions, I'm done after, after five, I'm not making any more choices.
Most of them will.
Does that hurt in any way the people who? I mean, and, and other people go, I mean, there's a significant number of people who say, I, I, I mean, let's say half don't finish. But the other half do. How does that change the analysis and the ability to win?
Your say, if you vote for four and there's four seats, your say is equivalent to what we do now. If you do more, it's just like, only if it's necessary, you know what I mean?
If it's necessary.
If it's necessary, we have the information.
And the surplus votes.
Right.
Will come into play.
Right. Cause a lot of times, I'm, I'm sorry, I saw you.
Oh, no, it's okay, no.
Who was it? I didn't see you.
Is it safe, safe to say that if you do this, as a voter, if you do this properly, you're casting a more thorough vote?
Yeah.
More thorough.
Simplistic, I'm putting it simplistically. I'm casting a more thorough vote, ranking the 10 candidates, one through 10, than if I rank them one through four.
Right.
My vote is more thorough and, and I technically, theoretically have more say if I do it properly.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I, I, the only pushback I'd say is the proper, because a ranked choice voting ballot with just a one marked is fully proper.
Right, right.
With five marked, fully proper.
Correct, but I'm just saying, looking at it in the scope of things, if I was to do it like it technically should be done, one through 10, and people start getting on it, my vote was gonna be more thorough because it's gonna continue to carry.
Yeah. I mean.
To go back to the movie for a moment. Let's say you have all the different species and the tigers don't finish the vote. They don't, they, they only, I'm done at five. The tigers as a group don't lose more influence, do they? Than the, let's say, let's say the, the gorillas or the, the gorillas that just, they, they got their, their team ready to go and they're gonna go to 10 and they're gonna do their, their ranking.
Well, keep in mind.
And they know how they're doing it.
At some point, because there's tigers and gorillas running, if the gorillas are ranking everybody, they're ranking tigers. Right?
They're ranking them lower.
Lower. Could I? But, but it has to get to that point. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, it's, it can't stay.
Also, can I, can I, can I take a shot at this?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay. Say that you vote for four people and then stop ranking. That is only a problem if your first, second, third, and fourth candidates are all eliminated. If that happens, then you, like, if you'd voted for four super long shot candidates that hadn't, that none of them had a chance and you didn't put any of the candidates that honestly had a chance, then you don't have an opportunity to express your preference among the candidates who had a chance. For what it's worth, and I say this with all due respect, a whole bunch of people did that this year in our school committee elections. Right? They ran out and voted for six people and none of them won. Or for four people and not a single one of them won. So that, that's a thing that happens right now. Now, if those people had come and just ranked those candidates and not put anyone after to say, but if none of them went, I do prefer this person over this person, then they don't get to express a preference on it. But they're in the exact same situation that they're in today. Right? They cast a vote out for an unpopular candidate who didn't win and so they don't. But, but the difference is that if a lot of those, you know, if, even if they're not a ma, a majority, you know, if, if a fraction of those people say, no, we're a minority in this, you know, electorate, but we do, we do feel that we would like a voice, they probably would get a voice on that body, for better or for worse. And so I, I just think it's, it's. Excuse me, my allergies are horrible. If, um, my point is that if, if you're, if you vote for five versus 10 is what we're saying, that only practically matters if your first five candidates are eliminated, which in the context of a municipal election is somewhat unlikely, right? Like, a lot of our at-large elections are five, six, seven people running for four seats. If you vote for four of them, probably one of them is gonna get on. Like, you know, like, your vote will probably count for one of those candidates, for a, a winning candidate at some point in the process. And in fact, a fraction of it may transfer to another candidate. But like, it, it's not like, you, you know what I'm saying? I think, does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
So it doesn't, like, if you don't, if one group, so I guess that's, if one group of people, to, to come back to your question, this is the answer, I think, if there's one group of people who ranks, who fills out the whole ballot and one group of people that, that doesn't, whether or not that matters largely depends on how successful those people's high-ranked candidates are. If the people who only ranked a couple, ranked a couple wildly unpopular candidates, then it's quite possible that they won't have an opportunity to express their preference for a viable candidate. That's already the case in our current system. It just, that, it still is the case. Where if those people had made a choice to say, okay, but even among these candidates who I'm not crazy about, I do have some preferences, then they get an opportunity to express that preference. Perhaps they would prefer for a moral reason to have no say in it. They say, I actually think all those guys are jerks and I, I don't want anything to do with it.
Runoffs. You can think of this as runoffs. So ranking just one means you go to the election and then there's a runoff and you don't vote in it. Ranking two means that you go to the election and then there's a runoff and you go vote in that runoff.[1749.31]